City of Tucson Planning Commission, my name is Chuck Martin. I'm the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission and will chair meeting tonight. Responsibilities of this body are to advise the Mayor and Council and the Planning and Development Service Department on the adoption of long-range plans, policies, specific plans and regulations that affect land use and development. Will staff call item one? Will call?
Yes, of course. Thank you, Chair Martin. Chair Willett? Absent. Vice Chair Martin? Commissioners Ajir? Think you're muted.
Here.
There we go. Commissioner Cassidy?
Here.
Okay, Commissioner Pafford? Absent. Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz Pino?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Huaraca? Absent. Commissioner Lane? Absent. And Commissioner McCantsy?
Present.
So we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item two is approval of legal action report for October 12, 2022. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the report.
Still? Second?
Did somebody make a motion?
Yes, this is Commissioner Cassidy. I made a motion.
Thank you. All those favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Anybody oppose? Say nay. We'll move on to item three, C82201, Infill Incentive District Update, UDC Text Amendment Study Session. With the staff, please provide a presentation for item number three.
I apologize, I lost my Zoom window here for a second. Okay, excellent. Yes, so item number three, Infill Incentive District, UDC Text Amendment Update. This is a study session. And we're going to kind of split up the presentation a little bit for you here this evening. Acacia Dupierre is going to kind of go through the background and the kind of overview of the Infill Incentive District. And then I'll talk a little bit about the proposal that's in front of you. So I think we'll get started. I can get this to move forward. There we go.
I was just checking, is the presentation up on the screen?
Oh, well, that's another issue too. Hold on. How's that?
Hey, looks good. Thanks, Dan. All right, thanks, everybody. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to give a decent amount of background on the IID, the Infill Incentive District. It's an important zoning tool that's due for review and extension based on a sunset date that was set in 2019. That sunset date is January 31 of next year, which feels like it is quickly approaching. So this is a bit of a tight timeline. We've been working on this review and proposed update since Mayor and Council provided direction in February of this year, directing staff to begin the IID review and engage stakeholders and neighbors in the community. So to cover the basics, the Infill Incentive District, I'll reference it as the IID going forward, is an optional zoning overlay. It's shown in colored areas here on this map, covering the downtown area, the streetcar route, along with some commercial corridors that extend out from that urban core. So property owners can choose to use the IID standards that are designed to result in more walkable, more transit-oriented, more mixed-use urban built environments than our underlying zoning allows. It provides flexibility and incentives in exchange for meeting design standards and historic preservation goals. It was first established in 2006, but it's been modified and updated over time, especially in connection to the investment in the Sunlink Streetcar. So something that might be helpful to clarify right away is the difference between the Central Business District and the IID. They are two different tools that share some geography overlap and they're connected to development. But the CBD is about financial incentives, using the government property lease excise tax, the G-Plat, to facilitate that development. The IID is a zoning tool focused on supporting transit-oriented development and adaptive reuse projects. So while they cover similar areas and many times are both used on projects, they don't have the same boundaries and are different processes that aren't tied to each other. So back to the IID, as I mentioned, it's been reviewed over its lifetime to adjust where needed to be an effective tool for transit-oriented development. Between 2013 and 2015 was the last time it underwent its most significant changes. And decisions were made in 2019 include the sunset date that we're working towards now. Additional guidance given in 2019, things that we should consider, included looking at parking trends and how they affect development to explore design guidelines that better address the transitions between different areas of the IID and to conduct a housing study to determine how to deal with student housing and affordability issues. So that sunset date is what we are working towards now. And a major component that received comment and feedback throughout this engagement process was the actual IID review process. And I'll try to give a good summary of that here. So there's a number of steps. First off is the pre-application meeting. An applicant that wishes to use the IID on a project requests that preliminary meeting. It both gives a heads-up to development staff and other departments, but also is the first round of feedback that an applicant will receive about their proposal. A big indicator of how that process may proceed is if the project location or its thresholds make it a major or minor review. After that, the applicant must give notice, host and document a public neighborhood meeting where they present the project and listen to neighbors' feedback. Those materials need to be included in the complete application. So the radius and contact for notice is larger for those major review projects than the minor ones. So the rest of that complete application, in addition to those neighborhood meeting materials, includes the project plans, any supporting materials, comments received so far and fees. If complete, the application is accepted and forwarded to the applicable departments and agencies for review. And that designer view is a key part of the IID process. All projects undergo the review by a design professional. Major review also includes a review from the IID Design Review Committee, which will include a member of the affected neighborhood. So recommendations from these reviews are sent to the PDSD Director, who will make a decision to approve, approve with conditions or deny the project. Appeals are possible within 14 days, but if approved, the project can move on to the development package process. So all up for the IID portion of a project without complications, a major review can take four to six months and a minor review can take about two months. So what have the outcomes of the IID included? Some of its successes include the number of housing units that it's helped facilitate in recent years. So this project is the Marist at 111 South Church from 2018. The whole project includes 83 affordable senior housing units. And the project is also tied to the adaptive reuse of the historic Marist College Building. So flexibility that helped this development fit on the site through the IID included parking reductions, reduced setbacks and adjustments to required landscaping. And just to get those IID stats in, the total new residential unit supported by the IID is over 1,100 and 250 of those were affordable or senior housing units. So it's not just housing, but affordable housing that's been supported by the IID. Some projects listed here include the Westerner on East Broadway, the Marist, like I just mentioned, on Church, Seventh Avenue Commons on East Fifth Street and the West End Station on the West Side on Congress. All of those have totaled up to 250 affordable housing units, which is about 16% of the housing that's been implemented using the IID, which is a number I believe we'd all like to see increase as soon as possible. So another housing example is the Flynn shown here. It was more recently completed last year and it includes 243 market rate units. So to receive flexible incentives for this project, it incorporated several historic resources on site and in exchange was able to use parking and setback reductions that are a reasonable match for an urban built environment. And some very visible commercial projects include hotels that have been built using the IID, including the Hilton Dual Brand Hotel at 141 Stone. So similar incentives were used to develop this project and it contributes to over a million square feet of commercial use that was developed using the IID. There we go. And then something really important to emphasize is that the IID also supports smaller-scale commercial businesses like the Barker Barker Cider House on Fourth Avenue. It's a historic building that used to hold a retail business, but changing the use to a bar using the underlying zoning would require a larger amount of parking spaces, more than might fit on the site without possibly demolishing the historic building anyway. So the IID includes flexibility to reduce the parking that's required on site to make a project like this viable in a location where walking, taking transit, using ride-share makes more sense for going out anyway. So a fuller roster of the projects completed using the IID include those housing units and commercial square footage that I mentioned. That includes a range of uses that's office, retail, cultural spaces, in addition to food and beverage sales and entertainment options. And then another way to consider the IID and its effects rather than the list of units and square footage, although that data is helpful and supportive, is to consider the combination of all these projects in one area and how that can lead to a different environment, ideally one that is comfortable at the scale of people and connects to the identity of the area even as updates are made. This map zooms in on some of the clusters of those projects where you can see that new housing density is next to amenities like the streetcar, even walkable access to retail, food and beverage, jobs and those entertainment options. It's a tricky thing to talk about how a place changes over time, what those project numbers mean when a place changes, especially for people that know it well. But the IID is used in effort to preserve historical and recognizable components while allowing for reuse and much-needed housing. So at street level, a view of that change is illustrated here. So this is an image of Stone Avenue. It's facing south at Broadway from 2011. That's over 10 years ago now. So some features here include one-story office buildings, outdated buildings and surface parking lot. And an image from that corner today includes many more things on the same corner, from multiple new housing units, reuse of the outdated office building, ground floor retail and medical resources, bike racks and street trees, all within easy reach of that streetcar stop right there on Broadway. So what are the components of the IID that help incentivize urban transit-friendly development? And how does it include the right trade-offs and standards? One component is how building designs have to provide a transition between denser, taller buildings and lower-density neighborhoods. The requirements are to step down heights over 25 feet to single-family residences. That's specifically in the Greater Infill Incentive Subdistrict and the Downtown Corps. There are requirements to break up massing to so that there's a facade that's less imposing, less bulky. There's privacy reduction through the thoughtful placement of windows and balconies. Also buffers and screening that can be achieved through landscaping or walls. And so some of those examples are shown here in a reference diagram, but also in real life there at East Fifth, the Seventh Avenue Commons, where those newer apartment buildings stepped back from the street across from the single-story, single-family homes. Also, historic preservation is a key part of the IID, especially in regards to that place-making consideration. So the incentives provided by the IID require maintaining listed historic properties. And in fact, the flexibility allowed by the IID standards make it more likely for a project to be able to adapt and be reused existing buildings because current dimensional standards for parking and setbacks are from a different era than some of these buildings were built, a time that was more focused on suburban-style development. And those older buildings and those sites just don't match those requirements. And a key directive that was established in 2019, that's at the same time that this current sunset date was set, was a local housing study. And so the Housing Affordability Strategy for Tucson, or the HAST report, was produced by our Housing and Community Development Department. It was adopted by Mayor and Council last year. Besides laying out current housing trends and the challenges we face, it includes policy directives of which one points to incorporating affordable housing incentives into overlay zoning on transit corridors, which is perfect timing to consider in this update to the IID. And then other recent initiatives in Tucson include the adoption of the, here we go, Sunshine Mile Overlay District on Broadway, just outside of downtown. So it's the first overlay in Tucson to include an affordable housing incentive. And as background to the proposal details that we'll get into later, the Sunshine Mile President permits flexible standards in exchange for developments that include at least 15% of affordable units. Those are units where the housing costs don't exceed 30% of a household's income when that household makes 80% or less of the area median income. Those units have to remain affordable for 50 years if they're rentals and for 30 years if they are for-sale condos. And the incentives are removing density caps, which could allow for more smaller units, which helps with affordability and diversity in housing options. The other incentives are reduced parking. So that's a lot of background on the IID, what it's supported so far and other recent context that leads into this update. So as I mentioned, Mayor and Council initiated this review and outreach process in February of this year. And staff have been sharing this background as well as current research and asking for comment and feedback in a number of formats and settings. So this spring, we linked up with Tucson Norte Sur, the Equitable Transit Oriented Development. Their outreach efforts, we paired up and also distributed surveys and information in parks and at Cyclovia, since these projects share overlapping geographies and even share goals. You probably know that our Transportation Department holds some of the best outreach events, so any excuse to hang out with them, there's usually ice cream. It's pretty great, but we teamed up with them and asked people to fill out in-person and online surveys. In addition to that, we gave a range of presentations to commissions and review boards who have roles in the IID review process to get their feedback. In April, we hosted an online stakeholder session to help focus on specific goals, which were further refined through focus groups with people, professionals, practitioners that have specific experiences with the IID. And then just recently, online and in-person public meetings were held just earlier this month. And in addition to that, our team attended neighborhood association meetings. We joined them to discuss specific areas where boundary expansions have been proposed. And we'll get into some of those detail a little bit later. So feedback from those early surveys and outreach included mixed impressions of downtown and the changes that people have seen over the years. Themes that people would like to see continued or even increased included bike routes and walkable environments, historic character and the Tucson identity, support for local businesses, affordable housing and overall affordability. And then themes to prevent or discourage included car-centric environments, cost and gentrification and a generic modern built environment. And that listening session held in April matched and formalized some of these themes. So key focus areas that came through that session were affordable housing, how the IID or the code is administered, adjustments to design standards, the mix of land uses throughout, historic preservation and sustainability. And then from there, the topics that moved forward for targeted group discussions oops, were housing process, design standards and land use. So luckily, sustainability is baked into any discussion of the IID because transit-oriented development prioritizes efficient use of space and infrastructure as well as walkable environments supported by density. The city is currently working on more large-scale changes, especially through the Climate Action Plan called Resilient Together and taking more of a citywide approach to new development. Those standards would also be required in the IID in the future. So further refined through the focus groups, key areas included minor adjustments to IID boundaries. So some edges that are affected by, but that can't take advantage of IID standards are proposed to be expanded, to be included. Also consolidating or streamlining the different processes involved in the IID review process. Another highlight was the challenges in terms of first-floor retail requirements that are intended to create active, street-level environments. Also affordable housing, parking and its effects and design standards for the different areas. So this is what has all led into the proposals. And I'll hand the presentation back over to Dan to get into some of those details.
Great. Thanks, Acacia. That was great. Really appreciate you going through the background. So yeah, we'll get started. Talk a little bit about some of the proposed changes to the Infill Incentive District. We have a handful of things in front of you. Kind of talk through each of them. If we need to, we have the ability to bring up some red lines. Looks like Commissioner McCantsy has his hand up.
Yes, thank you. Just out of curiosity, since the IID is described as transit-oriented development, is there any data or evidence that shows that the, these development projects have increased the use of mass transit and the Sunlink?
I know, personally, I know of anecdotal evidence related to that, just seeing kind of the use, but we can reach out to Department of Transportation and Mobility. I know they have data on that and return with some of that because I, I believe it has, but I don't have that data in front of me right now.
Yeah, I would love to see that. Thank you.
Of course, most definitely. Great. So these are the seven or so changes that we're looking at to the Infill Incentive District during this sunset date review. First one is looking at the individual parking plan and integration into the review process that's currently there. We're looking at some tweaks, minor tweaks to design standards in the downtown links in the Stone Avenue corridor. Some minor clarifications and cleanups, things that have just come out of review over time and kind of things that we've learned. And then the next three are the kind of the larger ones that we're proposing. And those are related to residential uses and industrial zones, a new affordable housing incentive, similar to what we have for the Sunshine Mile. And then some minor boundary changes where parcels have been either split or where they, there have been requests to include them potentially in the Infill Incentive District. And then the last one is kind of just why we're actually back here and looking at this and that's related to the sunset date. So with that, first one, Individual Parking Plan Integration. So currently with the Infill Incentive District, the Individual Parking Plan is like a separate process to reduce parking requirements that runs concurrently. It's a little confusing and a little kind of, I don't know, kind of wonky as far as how it works. So basically what happens is you have your IID review process and you have waivers for landscaping and other things that all occur within that. And then you have running kind of concurrently. At the same time, you have to run this other separate process. The idea here would be to keep all the standards that we have for that parking reduction within the individual parking plan and just have it kind of folded into the IID review process. So if there were a minor review, it would be reviewed at the same time as the design professional looks at all of this and ends up making its recommendation to our director. Same as the neighborhood meeting that goes along with that, that would be integrated into that. And then if there were a larger review, the IID Design Review Committee would review that as well as part of it. And then a lot of times what we end up doing is we would reach out to Park Tucson, make sure that they're involved in that review and things of that sort. They would still have to do a parking study, but instead of two separate approvals, there would be one that comes with the IID approval or decision that gets made related to that for those parking reductions. It's really just a streamlining, but all of the requirements would still be there for that. So that is the first one. This is kind of related to that complexity of the IID and different reviews that we heard from our focus groups. Second portion is, is design standards and minor tweaks. So looking at some, some changes to design standards in the downtown links, there are pretty minor things that have come up just kind of through experience, things that maybe weren't anticipated when drafting some of the design standards. First one is just privacy standards for adjacent properties with the same ownership. We didn't anticipate that there would be potentially an alley or a street between two parcels that are being developed together. So we require pretty significant setback requirements that may not be necessary for that type of development. So that's one of the things that we're proposing. Orientation of buildings reflective of new transportation projects, so looking at downtown links and how those are oriented. And then guidance, just some clarity for temporary parking of phased, for phased projects. This is an example, they came out of the Corbett project that's going in downtown where they're putting in, I think there's a burger restaurant or something that's going in and there's outdoor space. And they're going to use some of that area for parking temporarily, you know, as they phase in future development on that site. Some clarifications and minor tweaks that are in front of you as well. Uses that encourage street-level activation. So this is that ground floor retail. We, there's been a bit of confusion. There's also been some concern just about the fact that some of the ground floor retail isn't being utilized. So we're looking for more clarification in the code that it's really there to encourage street-level activation and not necessarily being limited to retail or commercial in those areas. So how can we activate those areas in other ways as well? There was an issue with shade coverage. It was measured at two o'clock instead of noon, so a small little change to that as far as that threshold. And then use tables, basically use tables in the Infill Incentive District. And this, this was kind of a part of the changes that we made related to industrial uses and residential. But they were located in the Greater Infill Incentive Subdistrict section. And then we had other sub-districts referencing back to that one. What we ended up doing was taking those, moving them into just general Infill Incentive District. use tables for uses for the whole section. Um, and then referenced back from both downtown core and the greater Infill incentive sub-district. It was a little strangely kind of organized. Um, we hope that this helped to clean it up a little bit. Um, it's still, there's lots of layers because of the, or the, the origination of the Infill incentive district where it was different. I started off as different overlays, um, but that hopefully helps to clean up a little bit of that, which has been a little, little hard to understand in the past. So those are the kind of minor changes that we're looking at. Um, the next one's a, a little more, a little larger of, of a, of a, uh, of a change. And this is really related, came out of the conversations last time, talking about affordable housing. I'm talking about gentrification and ways to potentially help with displacement. Um, and, and di- deal with our affordable housing issues that we have in the city of Tucson where we see ballooning rents and ballooning housing costs, um, in the city. So, um, we're looking at, um, and, and one thing I do want to mention, I think, um, maybe Acacia mentioned this as well, is that, you know, in the state of Tucson, our state of Arizona, we are very limited by the state on what we can do for affordable housing. Um, just to let you know, affordable housing, um, we can't require affordable housing or inclusive inclusionary zoning, um, in the state. So we have to figure out ways to incentivize that, uh, via the market, um, and market conditions. And that's kind of, that's what we're trying to do here. So, um, our approach for residential and affordable housing, um, it's really kind of two prongs here. Uh, basically we go through, we're going to be looking to proposing to allow for residential development on industrially zoned land in two of the sub-districts, there are two. Yeah, the greater Infill incentive sub-district and a downtown core sub-district. It's already allowed in the downtown links sub-district. Um, so we're opening up to the other two sub-districts to allow for that residential development in those industrial areas. Uh, we would go through and create baseline densities for building heights, um, and building heights for those market rate housing, um, depending on the scale. So you'd have more intense development than downtown core, less intense in the greater Infill sub- incentive sub-district. Um, and then we would incentivize affordable housing through density and building height bonuses for affordable housing projects within those, those sub-districts. Just to give you an understanding of kind of how much land this could potentially be, um, this is a map of industrial land overlapped with the Infill incentive district. So the Infill incentive district is this black line. Um, it's kind of the weird coyote looking thing. Um, and in this, this brown areas are industrial. So if you look up north, um, significant portions of the northern portion, north of Drachman really, are, are industrial. Um, currently can't have residential, could potentially have residential in the future. Um, there's also some areas in the downtown core over here. Um, kind of west of Granada along the, the interstate and then south as well. As you go south, um, kind of this way, there's a quite a bit of industrial. Right now downtown links already allows for industrial, residential and industrial, but there is quite a bit in, in downtown links as well. Um, when we went through and did an analysis of, you know, the type of zones that we have in different sub-areas, um, twenty-seven and a half percent of the land in the greater Infill incentive sub-district is industrial. Um, so we wouldn't be open to residential development, uh, currently. Um, seventeen point seven percent in the downtown core, so not quite as much in downtown core, but still a pretty significant amount of industrial that could potentially be opened up for new residential development that we need. Um, so, uh, this is the proposal on how we're looking to do this. Uh, it starts off with the residential uses in industrial zones. Uh, we would revise that code, uh, so that multifamily residential is allowed in industrial zone property outside of the downtown links. Uh, we would look to set baseline density caps for industrial zones, um, that were equal to, um, in the greater Infill incentive sub-district are three, so that's thirty-six units per acre. Um, or in the, um, in the downtown core, the more intense of the, of the ones to that, that that's equal to C-three, which is eighty-seven units per acre. Uh, we would set a maximum building height, um, for those. So in the R-threes, it would be equal to whatever an R-three zone is in the greater Infill incentive sub-district, so thirty-five feet or sixty feet in the downtown core. There's already allowed sixty feet pretty much everywhere in the downtown core. So that matches what is allowed in that area. So that's what would be allowed for, if you want to just build market rate residential development, um, in those industrial zones. Next you go to the affordable housing portion. So, um, you set that low enough to where it's an incentive to potentially include affordable housing. So we would amend the IID, um, to support affordable housing in the following way. So you'd have to have projects as a similar to what we did with Sunshine Mile, um, with fifteen percent affordable units. Um, and then they would be able to remove those density caps, um, so they wouldn't have a density cap. Um, if that promotes smaller units a lot of times, which ends up being more affordable, which is good. Um, and then also, uh, building heights. So building heights would go from sixty to seventy-five feet in the downtown core. Um, and then thirty-five feet to potentially sixty feet in the greater Infill incentive sub-district. Um, so those would be the things to allow for and try to incentivize this. Um, one other thing that we're looking at doing potentially, we are proposing, um, is creating a new pre-approval process for affordable housing projects. So, um, one thing that we've noticed in the past for the Infill incentive district, and even our grant road overlay is the fact that to get what are called low-income housing tax credits, which are a hundred percent affordable projects, um, you need to have zoning approval essentially for what you're going to do, um, to get those tax credits. And what's happened is that, um, the process doesn't move fast enough. The IID or grant road or whatever it is, the overlays don't move fast enough for them to get that approval to be able to utilize it. So we end up one with them using the underlying zoning and a lot of times having, uh, a less than desirable outcome as far as what they, what, what ends up getting built. So we want them to be able to utilize this. Um, this would allow for them to, uh, to potentially utilize the Infill incentive district, um, for that. Um, so just to kind of go back to what Acacia talked about earlier as well, I just want to point out that affordable is defined as again eighty percent or less, uh, area median income. Um, where housing costs do not exceed thirty percent of the family's income. So that's the affordable housing incentive. Um, we are also looking at some, uh, some boundary changes and minor boundary changes at places where, um, there's either split parcels or there's kind of intense commercially zoned areas. Um, and those three areas that we're looking at are Congress Street Commercial Quarter and Menlo Park. Um, the former near Mount Lantil site, um, that is kind of in the Mercado area. Um, and then commercially zoned property along Stone and Main Avenue in Dunbar Spring, um, where there's a lot of C-three zoned property. So the first one, um, is the Congress Street Commercial Quarter. So this is, um, so the Congress Street Commercial Quarter, this actually, there were business owners and property owners in that area who came to us and suggested potentially, asked it how we would go about adding this, um, to the Infill incentive district. Um, there's currently, uh, C-three properties that are right here, um, as well as C, C-one zoned properties that are here. Um, and there are a lot of historic structures here. There's several historic properties. So there's historic properties over here to the east of, uh, this is a Pima County building, east of Linda. Um, and then there's several historic properties as well that are all contributing to their national historic district that's there. Um, so the reason why this is beneficial to have these in the Infill incentive district is that there are historic presser protections that are in the Infill incentive district that helps to encourage the reuse of existing structures. So if you were to utilize the Infill incentive district, it's optional. They don't have to. They could use the underlying zoning. If they were to utilize the Infill incentive district, um, they would not be allowed to de-list any contributing structures. That includes demolition of those historic structures. So if they were to use that, they would have to keep those in place and then develop around them and, and they can potentially expand or whatever, as long as it doesn't de-list them. Um, but they would, they wouldn't be able to do so. Underlying zoning, they can go ahead and demolish it if they would like to, if they need to. And in a lot of cases, because they're older properties, they're generally smaller, um, there may not be room for them to do much with the existing structures. Um, and they do end up going through and demolishing those to redevelop. Um, the ID also includes transition standards and bulk reduction, um, that the underlying zoning doesn't. Um, so it requires you to step back to single-family residential. Um, it requires, um, bulk production as Acacia talked about earlier, but it also has a, has a, um, has a, 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 a public process that the underlying zoning generally does not have. So a neighborhood meeting, public input, that type of thing as well. Um, it does provide that flexibility. Um, again, so we, there are a couple of new businesses that are coming in that are changes of use. Um, and because of that, a lot of times it requires you to bring things, certain things out to code, park to full code, um, landscaping to full code, but when they're challenged and they're already built, um, a lot of times the standards that they were built to back in the fifties or forties or thirties can't be met, um, onsite. Um, so it allows for flexibility for those changes of use. As Acacia mentioned earlier, over half of the, of the projects within the Infill incentive district have been those small change of use adaptive reuse projects that we see. So that is kind of the benefits of including it, um, potentially. So that's the first one. Um, second one is the former near Mount landfill site. So this is a property that's owned by the city of Tucson. Um, portion of this, uh, is outside of the Infill incentive district that's zoned currently, uh, R-two residential. That's right here. Um, and it's split by the IID boundary, which runs right here. So this is actually right here, the full former near Mount landfill site. Um, so, um, this is, uh, just to orient you a little bit as well. Um, kind of what is commonly known as, you know, the Mercado areas up here. This is the, the kind of, um, the annex, and then this is Caterpillar that's right here, essentially. Um, I do want to point out, this is not the, uh, A-Mountain landfill site, which is a different one. Um, that, uh, is further south, it's zoned R-one. We're not suggesting any changes, um, to that portion, um, as a part of this process. Um, but so anyways, um, some of the benefits that we see, um, and are reasons why it's being proposed to potentially add this, um, is that it does allow for more comprehensive site planning and development. Um, if they, it wasn't included, you could potentially use the Infill incentive district on the eastern portion. Um, but that western portion would have to adhere to our kind of common, normal suburban development standards. Um, it would have to potentially go through like a flexible lot development process or something of that sort if it were to have, you know, new residential or something on there. Um, we do know that there are, um, there's a petition and there are some plans, um, to potentially have open space and park in open space. Um, the ID not only has requirements for open space, but it would allow for flexibility to build that into whatever development is there. It's important to know that, that this is owned by the city of Tucson, so we have a lot more, um, kind of, uh, I guess, ability to dictate what happens on that site than if it were privately owned. Um, additionally, uh, they are working on a neighborhood plan. Um, so they, you know, there will be goals that are shaped in the neighborhood plan and vision. Um, this can help to implement those and it would have the flexibility to potentially do that. Um, and then again, just in general, um, a lot of times, you know, just the ID does provide flexibility for minimum lot size type of development that you don't normally get with the underlying zoning. So that's that one right there. Um, and then the last one is really looking at, um, looking at Dunbar Spring, um, and the commercially zoned property that's along Main and Stone. Um, so currently there are, um, C-three zoned properties, um, that really run along Stone to the east of Dunbar and then along Main as well, um, over here. Um, many of those parcels, especially along Stone, are split by this alley that's running. I think it's Ash Avenue. It's like an alley. Um, and Infill incentive district only is like the eastern portion of that. Um, there are several historic properties in this area, both on the east and west side. Um, for this, uh, they're part of both the Miracle Mile Historic District. So you'll see like the Sahara, um, motel that's here. That's part of the Miracle Mile Historic District. Um, and then the houses are all part of the Dunbar Spring, it's Historic District. Um, and then additionally, the Dunbar Center, which is over here, which is currently, uh, um, is currently zoned R-two, um, is individually listed as a historic structure. So lots of historic structures. Um, part of the reason, as I talked about a bit with the, um, Congress Street Commercial area, um, that we are, we, we believe that this and we're proposing this is because of those historic protections um, in the Infill incentive district, um, that prohibit any sort of de-listing or demolition of historic properties. So, um, where the underlying zoning, which allows for up to seventy-five feet, um, that C-three zone, pretty intense and a lot of different types of uses, wouldn't require you, um, well, it wouldn't have a restriction on demolition. You could go through and demolish those buildings. The Infill incentive district would work to, um, allow for reuse of existing buildings, um, on those sites, um, moving forward. Um, there are transition standards again and bulk reduction, um, that the underlying zoning does not. It requires you to step back. So you can only go two stories, um, for the, for the, uh, when you're next to single-family residential and then you would have to step up your height potentially. Um, that is not required of the R-three zone or C-three zone, I'm sorry. Um, and then there's the flexibility again that makes those more viable spaces, um, where to, to go and reuse those existing buildings versus going through and potentially having to demolish them and re- and, and re- rebuild on them, um, for that. So I do want to mention just real quickly, there's also the Dunbar Center that's right here. Um, that is, uh, currently, um, operating under a cultural use. Um, that's been semi-grandfathered over time, but, um, this would allow for more flexibility in their uses as they move forward and they grow. Um, so that's part of the reason why we were looking at that. And it's a strange, kind of a strange thing, um, with the Infill incentive district to where, when it was initially drafted, um, there was this big gap that's right here along Main. Um, so this would be kind of filling in that two-block gap that, um, that is there. Um, and we're not entirely sure why, um, but it would be really just the C-three property and then adding in just the Dunbar Center in order to allow for some of the flexibility on changes of use on that site. Um, so those are the three boundary changes, um, related to that, uh, kind of, um, the Congress Street Commercial Quarter near Mount Lantil and then those commercially zoned properties, uh, on Stone and Main. Um, and then finally, uh, the sunset day, sunset date removal. Um, so, uh, we are, we are recommending, um, the removal of the sunset date, um, for a handful of reasons. Uh, one is really that the IID is, you know, ten-year plus track record of facilitating new housing, commercial development, and even less, two times we've gone back. Most, most of the feedback's, um, been quite good, um, and it does really support development downtown. Um, it supports the transit-oriented infill development that is, uh, that we've been seeing downtown and is very difficult to do with the underlying zoning if the IID were not there. Um, it supports affordable housing, climate action. Um, and mayor and council may direct staff to evaluate and amend the IID at any time. So, um, this is, uh, this is something that, um, we feel, um, would be, would be advantageous moving forward. Um, we are obviously in front of you now because of this, um, but it does put a time constraint that is kind of semi-arbitrary, um, versus mayor and council saying, you know, go and look at this and that type of thing. Um, so that's the sunset day removal, which we're recommending. Um, and then with that, really, um, just, uh, we recommend, uh, staff recommends an approval or prove motion to, um, set the Infill incentive district UDC text amendment for a public hearing on November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Um, that's important just because in order to make the timeline to get this, um, I guess, address the sunset date with mayor and council, we have to have the November sixteenth public hearing. So then we can go to mayor and council on December twentieth, so it can be approved within the thirty-day window of January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Just to let you know, there is a very tight time constraint on this. Um, but anyways, I'm very happy to answer any questions you may have, um, related to the proposal. Um, and I appreciate you listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Um, as a user of the code, that just that people know that Tucson's code is more of a suburban code and what you see downtown really can't be developed without some, an overlay or a lot of, uh, extracurricular work. So, thank you for your presentation. Um, let's see, Commissioner Young has your hand up.
Yeah.
Let's see, or the, you raise your hand, I'm just gonna go.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you, Chair Martin. And, uh, Dan, thank you much for the presentation. Very, very comprehensive. Uh, I, I definitely appreciate how, um, you all are looking comprehensively at, at some updates that, you know, by and large, seem to make sense to me. So, uh, that's great. I just had a couple of questions, um, about, uh, gentrification and displacement. Um, I know that there has been a lot of conversation as downtown has. I know that there has been a lot of conversation as downtown has developed about gentrification and the resulting potential displacement of folks that have lived in the area for a long time. And I'm just wondering, I guess, from my perspective, I don't ever feel like there's been a whole lot of concrete information that's come out about how the IID has or has not contributed to gentrification and particularly the resulting displacement. So I'm just wondering, do y'all have an idea? And better yet, still, do y'all have any data about how the IID has or has not, really, I guess, the ultimate thing is, is how many folks have been displaced by this or, or not?
Yeah, Commissioner Young, thanks for the question related to that. So I think part of what we're, what we're looking at here, and this is based off, so there was a study that was done by Professor Paivo at the U of A that kind of influenced and, and led to recommendations and changes within the government property lease exercise tax, which we talked a little bit about earlier. And that market study really was done to get an understanding of really of displacement in and around downtown. But also some strategies to potentially utilize in order to, to address gentrification and displacement. And a lot of what, what ends up happening, you know, looking at that, that study was, was related to really housing supply issues related to both affordable housing and market rate housing. And, and the strategies in there were related to, you know, just, we do, we, if we constrain the housing supply and we constrain affordable and market rate, it just leads to additional gentrification and displacement. So I think what we're trying to do here by opening up the residential, the residential and the industrial areas, as well as, you know, providing that affordable housing incentive is to really allow for more housing to try to offset some of those, those forces that create the displacement and gentrification. I also will say that, you know, the type of development that can potentially be done with the Infill incentive district versus our kind of suburban residential code. Suburban residential code, you have basically, you know, the, the kind of single-family homes, smaller scale stuff. And then you have the really big stuff that you can do. You can do the OCR1, OCR2 zone where you can go up to 300 feet and you have no density caps. And then you have the 5,000 square foot minimum lot size over here for R1, R2 and R3. And you don't have the stuff in the middle. And what the Infill incentive district does, it allows for the flexibility to be able to develop that, that missing middle that you, that you see, which allows for more mixed income households, which is again, and different types and sizes that help with some of those affordability issues.
Got it. Thank you for that. And then related to affordable housing, I'm just really happy to see that the city is thinking about, you know, with the constraints that the state of Arizona puts on cities in terms of affordable housing to, to try and build that into this. So if a developer were gonna build a property and, or develop a property and they were gonna do the 15% affordable housing piece, how is that managed? Is that, who, who makes sure that those units are affordable? Who is vetting, who gets into those units? Is the city of Tucson monitoring that? Or how does that work exactly?
Yeah, so Commissioner Young, so I will, I am not a housing expert. I don't, but that would be, end up being managed by Housing Community Development. Be through them. It'd be through covenants that they would put on those properties. And that's, I believe it's an annual report that they have to submit to HCD and Housing Community Development for that. So they're the ones who do the monitoring of, of those affordable units.
Great. Thanks, Dan.
Next is Commissioner Adury.
Did you mean me?
Sorry, yes.
Oh, okay. That's Zegir or a breeze. A breeze is fine. I'm okay with a breeze up. Okay, I have one question. So at the beginning, we were basically going through some of the historical parts and certain problems that brought up the new proposal. So, and one of them, I guess it's design standards or it's a minor clarification is ran into privacy for adjacent properties, their orientation and guidelines. And then towards the end, you're talking about the heights in C3 and how they're, they're stepped down. But is this gonna transfer, it's like, oh, all right. So you have affordable housing, so you can have your windows look into your neighbor's backyard type thing, or you can have a balcony out there. I'm kind of wondering how, how you're going to kind of justify and balance this out is if you have adjacent properties like residential and say the C3 next to each other, how are you gonna deal with that privacy problem that you already are having?
So yeah, no, Commissioners Adury, great, quick, great question. So that minor change is only related to if there would be the same property owner across from each other on the street potentially. So an example of this, it doesn't come up often, would be like the Union on 6th to where they owned one side of the alley and the other side of the alley. So the privacy mitigation standards that we normally do to other property owners don't necessarily work for something where it's the same property owner and you're designing it a certain way. So that, that's the only change that would happen related to that. As far as the affordable housing and affordable housing projects, they would still have to go through the full review, meet all of the, 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 the transition standards, the bulk mitigation and all of the privacy mitigation standards that any other development could have. So they were, they would still have to go through that full process.
All right. So, so, all right. So the same property owner today. What about the same property owner five years from now? Well, if he decides, well, I can, they're two separate properties. I can go ahead and sell it to one person. So basically, it kind of, basically then you run into that problem. Now you don't have the same property owner. You have two separate property owners.
So I will say this was a singular situation. And it was one where it was a unified development and that's what it would be related to instead of like that type of thing. It was, it's more just a being able to look at a site comprehensively and design it that way. That's.
So it was one development, but on two different parcels across, okay, all right, all right. I get it. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Next, Commissioner McCaskin. Can't see, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Has there been any thought to adding electric vehicle charging stations into the, the design standards for the IID?
Yes, Commissioner McCanty, actually, we just recently passed requirements for electric vehicle charging. Probably, I don't know, it was like two or three months ago. It's, it will be going, becoming effective on December 1st. And development within the Infill incentive district would still have to adhere to those requirements. So there would be requirements for EV charging for those, so long as they had parking.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other commissioners with questions, comments, questions for staff or comments? I don't see any more hands up. Dan, I think I saw a typo on the table. I'm not sure what pages, under 512, eight. Number one refers to the, the old table number under the GIIIS.
Oh, excellent. Yes, I know exactly what you're talking about. It should be changed to whatever section it's in, which is, I know, the IID general standard.
512, IID1 instead of GI, GIIIS1.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Mark.
Any other questions? I'll see with the completion of the discussion, I'm gonna ask.
Chair, Vice Chair Martin, it looks like Commissioner Zegir has her hand up.
I didn't know she unraised it or raised it again.
Yeah, one quick thing that I put in my notes. I was just going back to the beginning before the meeting. So the map, I appreciate the maps and all the detail you put in there. But the map that is, shows the different districts and the overlap and everything. You, you show I-10, but on the specific map that's in the 95 pages, you're, you do show I-10, but you kind of, the Santa Cruz River is not indicated there. And I think it's pretty important to have that piece in there because there's setbacks from that. And it looks like there's actually more developable land than there actually is. It's kind of, it's just, just a little minor detail. It's, it's probably not that important, but as far as visually, it's more accurate.
Great, Commissioners Adury will make sure we include that. I know some of those maps are the original ones, but we'll be updating those as we move forward. So that's a perfect time to do so. Thank you.
Not seeing any other hands up. I'm gonna ask for a motion to schedule C82201 Infill incentive district update UDC text amendment for a public hearing. On the staff has asked for November 16th, 2022.
Yes, this is Commissioner Cassidy. So moved.
Have a second.
This is Commissioner Ortiz Pino and I'd second that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion passes. I think we're 7-0. Item will be scheduled for the Planning Commission public hearing on November 16th, 2022. Next item is item four. Staff announce, PDSD staff announcements.
We do have a few announcements. One is, I think we mentioned at the last meeting that we are upgrading our permit system. So that is launching on Monday. We're in the midst of that upgrade and cut over process right now. So our permitting system is currently closed to the public. We're not accepting applications this week. And starting Monday, we'll be accepting applications via our new online portal. So that's an exciting upgrade for PDSD. The other announcement is that we are beginning to the process of updating our general plan. This is a major planning effort for the entire city. And we will be scheduling an informational item or session with Planning Commission on this in the next several months. But we are launching that public engagement process in January of next year. We just went to mayor and council recently to discuss the community engagement approach and expect that mayor and council will formally adopt the community engagement program in two weeks, I believe, at their November meeting. And we will begin that public outreach next year with the target of adoption of the general plan by fall of 2025. So it'll be about a three-year process really to update and adopt a new general plan, which is a policy framework for the entire city, not just in terms of land use, but many other policy areas as well, including housing, transportation and environmental issues, sustainability, et cetera. So we will be doing an update, kind of an overview for Planning Commission probably early next year. And we'll be scheduling regular briefings with Planning Commission on this over the next several years.
Thank you. We're gonna have a naming contest for the general plan.
We would love to and we, we will take any suggestions.
Any other staff announcements? Next item is item number five, future agenda items. Staff provide the commission with a preview.
Of course, yes. So busy, busy fall, winter. We have the adult use marijuana social equity licenses, which is related to the special exception process. That is coming to you for a public hearing next week on Wednesday. I, those items will be posted this evening. And I will send out an email to everyone once they are posted. So those, that's the next one. And then the Infill incentive district update, we'll be back in front of you with a public hearing on November 16th for that. And then further on down the road, we are working on a code consolidation and cleanup. And we're looking at potentially in December, coming to you for a study session on that. Thank you.
I'll ask a question real quick.
Sure.
Are these a public hearing, are, are commissioners required to attend these public hearings? And are they Zoom or in person?
Commissioner McCanty, yes, they are, they're Zoom. But yes, you are required to be there for the public hearing. There needs to be a quorum. Essentially, what will happen is there'll be a presentation. And then the chair, Chair Martin or Chair Wellitt, will open it up to the public and then the public will be able to speak. Usually it's three to five minutes or so to provide their testimony on the proposal for you.
Great. Thank you.
The next item is item number six, call the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the commission? I don't see any hands up at this point. There was no, Dan didn't have a list of names, so. We'll move to item number seven, adjournment. Entertain a motion for adjournment.
A motion to adjourn.
Have a second.
I'd second that.
Thank you. That motion is a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. I will be at the next meeting, so I'll see you in November 16th. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.